Good evening and welcome to the City of Iscany Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, December 21st. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Any public comment at this time? All right, let's move on to the committee meeting items. E1, Public Works Update, Mr. Sylvester.
Mayor and members of city council, for public works updates, we have... For streets, the crews have been working on a tree trimming list. This list is generated over the summer when the trees are at their fullest so they can see what trees need to get trimmed, and it's a winter project that we do annually. With the lack of snow we've been getting, or we're getting in November, the guys were here to help the liquor store move. Some of the stuff they did was move some stuff from the old store to the new store, install some shelving in the retail area, help stock the shelves, build some wooden shelving for product storage in the back, and prepared the old store for the new owners. For storm, the 2021 Storm System Management Project has been completed. Staff is working on doing some cross cutting in storm ponds, just as winter annual maintenance that we do. For jetting, sewer jetting was completed this fall. This year we jetted more than usual as kind of a training exercise for some of the new guys. They jetted most everything out to the main lift station. The clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant have been drained and cleaned. The wastewater is now in winter mode where the clarifiers and UV bulbs are not in use. Fall maintenance was completed at the wastewater plant as well on oil changes for the backwash pumps, sludge pumps, and irrigation blowers. For water, one of the things we had going on is we had nine residents this year that didn't turn in their private well water testing, so the guys were able to reach out to those nine people and get those samples completed. As of now they're completed, we test for the bacteria and nitrates in the wells. The limit on bacteria is zero and 10 milligrams per liter on the nitrates. Public Works was able to make the snowmakin' machine. We've made some modifications to it and continue to make some adjustments on it to get it to work better than it is now. The compo site closed on November 7th, and we were able to have some compo screened for residents this spring who left black dirt for their gardening for the spring. The Santa event was held on December 10th with Santa followed by the movie Jingle All the Way, and Alyssa had the candy cane flashlight hunt at Legacy Park that weekend as well, and they're both very well attended.
I was at both. And I could not believe all the people that showed up for Santa. We had to have over 250, easily.
That's good.
And then the candy cane hunt, I would bet 75 to 100. I mean, this hadn't been the most popular year I've seen it happen. It was a good time.
Yeah, it was good, yeah.
Any questions by the council? Good job as always in the team, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you.
Let's move on to, well, this is gonna be, I thought it was you again. E2, the Water and Sewer Base Fees Charge Discussion. I'm assuming that's Mr. Becker?
Yes. So this was requested to be added to the, to this meeting's agenda. It's just a discussion item for now. Some background information based on what was requested previously, as best I can tell, and I went through a lot of minutes and resolutions and things, as best I can tell, these fees began back in 1982. And it seems as though at the time, what was going on was there were a lot of residents that had well water, and they'd been asked to start testing, and from the meeting minutes, they don't give specifics, but you're given the impression from the minutes that a very large percentage of the wells were not passing. And it seems as though the council said, all right, we need to start getting people onto this. And one might infer from that that the fee was meant to be an incentive to get onto the system, sort of, you're already paying for it, so get off the well that's not providing you the quality water that you should have. So I think that goes back to about 1982, it seems to be the timeframe. For perspective, 2020, total for the fixed well and sewer charges, we collected, or we charged just shy of $3,800 bucks. So it's not a, it's not a make or break kind of thing for either utility. And we have roughly, roughly 13 that do the, that are charged for fixed sewer and 33 accounts that are charged for fixed water. So we're not talking a lot of, we're not talking a lot of residents, we're not talking a lot of money from the utilities perspective. Also did at least a little bit of research around neighboring communities. I don't find any evidence that Cambridge, Princeton, or Brahm charge fees like this. So I don't know if there are any other, if there's any other information that anyone
Any questions by the council?
No, I just had asked that we discuss it just based off of what George had said when he stopped in, you know, what was it, a month ago or something like that, so, you know, I just think if they're not, you know, obviously everybody's, almost everybody, you know, is on city sewer and water now, of course, so using it as an incentive to get them to get off of the well water isn't probably necessary anymore. And, you know, I don't know, I guess I just would like us to not probably be charging those fees if they're not using the sewer and water that we, why should we charge them? Why should they pay for it if they're not actually using it?
Does somebody have a good opinion on that? Why are they paying it if they're not using it?
I've been doing it since 1982, so we're just, all we're doing is following.
Okay, well, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just wondering what the explanation is.
I think in the end, the honest assessment is that it's, it got implemented in 1982, and I don't know that anybody's ever really questioned it, anybody's really given it a second thought, you know, it's one of those charges that if it's only applying to a, you know, a few handfuls, you know, a few dozen people, you know, just doesn't garner a lot of attention. What I, you know, I would say is I don't think that it's, you know, if the council wants to, wants to get rid of it, I don't think that it's essential, it's, I don't think that if we did get rid of the fee, it's not gonna have some dramatic impact on our future capital planning or anything like that.
I guess my question would be is, and we use George because he's sitting in the audience, but if George, if his well failed and he wanted to hook up to city water, he has that opportunity, correct?
Yeah, everybody that, especially in his, in his case, but everybody else that's annexed in, we did go through and spend the money to provide a service connection for everybody.
So the choice is there, and we're still charging them?
Yes, everybody's got it up to the edge of the right away, so, I mean, they still need to take care of any work that's on their property outside the right away, but yes.
And I think the rules are if their well is not working anymore, it's not something they can use anymore, then they are required to switch to city hookups, right? So I mean, eventually everybody will go to the city water, right? So, or sure.
So here's, here's the way I look at it. When you tie in on a property, you got a lot, you build a house on a lot, you gotta pay a whack and sack fee. That's to pay for that tying into that sewer and water. You know, I, to charge somebody something if they're not using it, I don't disagree, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. We're gonna charge them a whack and sack fee. And maybe at that point, if these people haven't been paying it, whack and sack fee could be higher.
So we're essentially having them pay for that tie-in if they're building a house, and then we're charging them a fee on top of it?
Well, it covers maintenance costs if there's anything ever to fail.
Yeah, so... For something they're not using.
On the curb side?
For something they're not using. That seems greedy to me.
They're only paying sack and whack once they connect.
Yes.
So when, when the...
Once they connect, they get it. I mean, I would totally get it, once they connect, then they should be paying fees like everybody else.
Right, so when the project goes through and the water and sewer gets stubbed out, that is the availability that they could connect without a higher cost to them. The city has paid the cost upfront to put that stub out to their parcel. Now, if that stubout leaks or something, the city pays to fix that and repair it, having that availability left waiting for when they do want to or need to connect. So that was my best guess of why it was implemented, is to cover costs like that, because those costs, if that stubout is leaking, it's not passed on to the resident, even though that would be some future stub for them, it is just there. The city takes that on.
So you take, you take a developer comes in, develops property, he's paying for that stubout right when he does all his infrastructure. And if that lot sits empty for 20 years, nobody's paying that. Nobody's paying for that at that, at that period of time. You're not going to these developers and nailing them $60, whatever, whatever the fee is, I just, $60, throw them pulling out of my hat. You're not nailing them $60 a month because they're not tied onto it.
Or owns the property, pays that base charge. A half base charge. So I don't own the property, someone is paying that half base charge.
Even if the development sits for 10 years and they haven't used it?
Well, I don't even know if we have...
And if the developer owns that property, he paid for it already.
Yeah, so we, right now, when a new home goes up, the charges for water, the storm water charges start right away. Water sewer charges start once there's actually a meter connection. And then that's, it starts, so if the developer's sitting on the home for, let's just say for two months instead of 10 years, let's say he's sitting on it for two months while he's trying to sell it, and all he's doing is showing it, he's, you know, those fees are still there, yeah, you gotta pay your, your base charge, and then in that instance, you probably don't have any consumption, but you would pay that base charge.
So on a financial level, I'm not hearing you argue, Mike, so, I'm really not worried on a financial level? I guess I would lean on Josie or Matt on a structure level or street maintenance level, I mean, your, your streets, you're, you're the know-all of the city, so you're gonna, plus he used to do his job, so you, you're gonna know as well. I mean, is there really any reason why we have these in place?
Mike can come up with the numbers. We did calculate the numbers approximately of what we do, take in from those charges. I think it's philosophical if the council wants to. If you want to have part of the maintenance being covered by people having the ability to connect, that's why I believe it was put into place, then it should be there. If you think that, no, it's not, and those maintenance costs would be covered by sack and whack, once they do connect at whatever time that may be, then perhaps we don't need to do that.
I mean, that would...
I would lean, I would, actually, I would lean that way and wait till they tie into it. Just for a simple fact is, some people may not, you know, we came through, we put in, we put in the water, in the sewer stubouts. There's a lot, okay, we're gonna put one in there. Did they have a choice? Not really. We just did it.
Seems like we're not only punching them in the groin, now we're punching them in the face, too. That's what it seems like to me.
That's just how I feel.
And for, and, you know, in 2020, we built out 30, not even $3,800. And, you know, when I do rate studies, I don't, I don't budget that close to the margin. $3,800 a year, and actually, because we're, we've lowered all the rates, those numbers would actually go down, it's just not gonna make a difference.
Well, no other city around the area is charging like this, right? I mean, they're...
Not that I'm aware of.
One thing we will wanna take a look at, though, is if we do wanna potentially move away from it, is for staff to research where else it impacts. I believe there's approximately three places in city code, chapter 262, which is the charges, utility charges, 325 makes a reference to availability charges. So we'll wanna take a look, there might be three places in city code that we would need to amend with an ordinance change, if we look at taking that out, because there are, when we annex properties, there was the availability to connect, and so that language is in there kind of sprinkled, because this has been something standing since 1982, it's kind of sprinkled throughout. So we'll wanna do a fine tooth comb in city code to see where all those would need to be looked at amendments.
Oh, I'm gonna say one other thing, and it, and it drives me batshit crazy, is if somebody's line leaks from the curb stop to their house, they're responsible for it. I look at it saying, I ain't paying for that water till it hits my meter. Now, bear in mind, there is no city that I've worked in this state of Minnesota that does it any different than that. So trust me, I don't, I understand that. But it does drive me batshit crazy that all of a sudden I'm responsible for that line from that curb stop to that meter. I don't pay for that water till it comes from my meter. You, you see where I'm going? It's kind of a double-edged sword situation because of that, but now, then you gotta go back, now, electrical companies, you pay for the wire coming from the street to your house. Never used to be that way, but now you do.
The only other way that I've seen other, some cities do it, if not the same way we are doing it, is they say back to the water main, which then incorporates both sides of the curb stop, so it gets even more...
Yeah, but like I said, I just, I'm just showing you that point, I mean, it does drive me nuts, it's like, I'm not paying for any of that water till it goes for my meter. Why do I care if it's leaking? But yet again, you do care because that is putting a strain on our water system. I understand that, but I just, just so people understand that, I agree and I disagree with it, you know? I mean, I agree to disagree, but I personally, if they're, if, let's use George for example, he probably never gave a shit if they ever put a stubout, pour water in his, on, to his property. He didn't care, he wasn't asked if he wanted it or not at that point. You know, but in the same aspect, if they didn't put it in, it would've cost him five times or 10 times the amount of money to put it in when you did want it.
Plus, it's not better for our infrastructure of doing like a wet tap onto the water main, because then you have more, more likely and probability of leaking and future problems, so we wouldn't want infrastructure-wise to have it done like that.
But I just, I just don't, you know, it's 50/50 if he's ever gonna get city water. It's 50/50. I mean, so if the well goes down and all of a sudden he's gotta put in a deep well, and it's gonna cost more for the deep well than it would be to tie in on the city water, he'd be smarter to tie on to that tap, and at that point?
Then he gets charged.
Then he gets charged.
So within city code, we do have, if you currently have a well and that well fails, you do have the ability to shock it, do some things to try to get into compliance, but ultimately, if it is not safe for consumption, the city code currently says if you have availability, relative availability, or whatever the other word is, availability, reasonable availability to connect, you are to connect, so then they don't have the option of putting in a deep well. So we do have that. So eventually, I guess the thought would be is that people, if you're in city limits, you do eventually connect at some point in time, could be 50 years down the road, but at some point in time, you do connect.
I think that's a different story, and we'll deal with that when the time comes, but to go back to what's at discussion here is, I think it would be worth having staff look into city ordinances and see if we could ex-nay that out and do away with the fees if they're not hooked up, and they shouldn't pay anything until they are hooked up.
What about, for example, a development, two or three houses get built, the rest of lots, they're all stubbed, but all the lots sit empty for five, six years because of the recession?
Yeah, currently...
What happens then?
Currently, on those, you would pay the half, you would pay the half, half base charge anyway.
Right, so how would you change, like, something for current residents that aren't hooked up and not, and still keep that in play? You see where I'm getting?
I'm sure you could shift the legal ling, the legal lingual to cover that, could you not?
So what you're saying is, if the house, if the, if the land, the parcel was vacant?
Yep.
They would still pay, but the people who have a house that don't wanna connect or chose not to connect wouldn't pay?
Well, that's my question.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't...
Is that what you guys would do if you're gonna, are you gonna get rid of the whole language altogether, so it affects developments that are sitting on empty lots and that now they don't have to pay anymore either?
I agree with you, Dan, what you're saying, but, but there's a difference in what, we're gonna use Mr. Heman again because he's in here...
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the fees.
No, I know what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, you're, you're putting in a development, has been developed. His property was there, house was there long before the stubout.
Well, yeah, I really like that.
That's what I, what I'm referring to. If you have a development that's already in, then I think also in that same aspect, there should be, and Matt, you can, I don't know what, what is the, you know, how far do you go into a development when you have a main shot off? I mean, do you just have one going into the development, or do you have one halfway down development also? I mean...
I'm just saying, 'cause he had, Becker had said that they pay fees right now.
Yeah, so the, the difference here between that example and Mr. Heman's status would be is, is that we're talking about, you know, parcels that have a well or septic, all right? So...
So that's the only language that you would change?
Yeah, so my understanding is that would be the focus of the language change in ordinance, would be...
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
If it's, if it's within a development, it's within city limits, they're not gonna have a well.
They're not gonna have an option to have a well.
Right, but they're, they got a stub and they're not hooked up because there's no house right there. That's what I'm getting at.
The language would have to read that if you have an existing well.
The legal jargon.
Yeah, we would be looking, I mean, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is we'd be looking at language regarding wells and septics, and that those are the, the parcels that we are looking to exclude from fees.
Okay.
Yes, yes. That's my idea.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Right?
Yeah, so we can, we can parse out the language on that, so that developers are still, you know, their intent when they developed was to make use of city infrastructure, and they should pay for it, but whereas, you know, George here, he gets annexed in, he didn't ask for that, and he's not intending...
Still got a working well, still got a working septic?
Yeah, at least not anytime soon, he's not intending... No, no time soon is he intending to make use of city infrastructure, so I, that's where I would draw that line, and so we would keep that language tied to existing...
Yeah, just be all in the legal jargon is what I would think.
Yep.
But it doesn't matter if you are recently annexed or not, it's if you have a well and septic then, correct?
I would believe that anybody, even though if they were in the city of Iscany, the chances are they don't have a well.
Unless they're on the edge and they were just annexed in.
If they were just annexed in, the chance...
Then they do.
Yeah, we do have some that have...
We do have some that have wells that weren't just annexed in, since 2019, we have some that...
We're on five, right? Where we did the sidewalk, we had some of there.
Yeah, we've got about 33 right now that are paying the fixed well charges, right? So that means they have a well and they're paying a half base charge, but only, what do we annex in? 17 or 19 properties?
34.
34? So...
That floors me, she did.
So we're looking at 60-some properties then to, this would affect?
No, I mean, currently, like, in, in this opera, in 2020, that's, that's what we got, 30, 33 wells, like, that's...
In town, including the lots that were annexed?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I, I thought, I thought you said that you, we have some older ones in town that weren't annexed.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have to go back and look at the annexation map, and I kinda wish Jason was here, I would wanna look at how many of those parcels were, you know, like, like George, for example, he's got two parcels. One is the one he lives on, but one, it doesn't, do you even have a structure on that one at all?
No.
Yeah, so that's one of those ones where it's like, he would be two, he would count twice on the annexation, there's two parcels, but, I mean, he would...
And he's paying for one that he doesn't even have a well on?
He would only reasonably ever make use of one service connection.
If he does not have a well and septic on the one, he's still gonna be paying the half base charges.
He pays on both of them.
So...
That's why I'm saying that he shouldn't have to.
Even when we're talking about the developments and, you know, the property that's gonna be developed, we're still only talking total $3,800.
No matter how many accounts, we're just talking about...
I think it gets a little confusing and hard and difficult, not to complicate this, but difficult to make the argument for these versus these, and we have to write this in city code, who it applies to and who it doesn't. I, if we say vacant, I mean, I know we're using Mr. Heman as an example, if he does have, one of his properties is vacant, doesn't have a well, so then he would still be charged the half base fee on that, does that seem, even though it's not new development, you know, is that what we're looking for too, then?
Well, he's only got one stub for one property, but he has two parcels, right?
Two, each parcel is stubbed, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's...
I don't know if I can clarify exactly what you guys are trying to say, Baker, really quick. If you, and I understand developers, if I wanted to develop this property and have 20 lots, and then all of a sudden I decide I'm not gonna develop, but I already bought a lot of that, my infrastructure put in, I can understand why you might want to force these people to hook up by having a charge, paying half city sewer and water. My example is, I have an extra lot, but when I bought my property, it came that way. I homesteaded both, so I don't have a developed lot, they're both homesteaded, so the language you could put into it if you decided to switch it is develop lots, developers, developers come in, they wanna develop an area...
It'd be a developer, develop...
...that's 50 lots.
Development.
Development, there you go. So it'd be a feasible development lot, or develop, how would you say that?
But on the empty lots that are put in by a developer that they were gonna come through, put all these houses in, didn't happen, they're stubbed out, those people who are eventually gonna buy those lots and build a house are gonna pay sack and whack on it anyways, and you're recouping your costs, so then why charge it to anyone?
Well, that's why, that's why I brought that up, 'cause they are paying fees right now on a vacant lot, the developers, correct?
Yeah, and then when they would build, I mean, now, it depends what state that is, right? Because if they're gonna pull a permit...
Are we gonna be in financial distress, Mike, if we just don't charge it to anyone?
Well, if we're gonna expand the scope past the, the fixed well and sewer charges, then, you know, then I gotta, I probably go back and do some more math, but...
I would, I would just, I would, I would, my words, people that were sewer and water, that would drive, cut the line, draw it right there in the sand, because those people already have functioning water. Mr. Heman's case, he has two lots, one doesn't even have a well on it, it's just a, I'm gonna call it an outlot, because it's, even though it's a parcel, it's an outlot, there's nothing on there, there's no structure, there's no well, there's no septic, there's nothing. Let's say he stays there for 50 years and never does anything with it, and he's not gonna have water tied into it until he, until it, so let's say he turns around and he sells that to me, and I'm gonna build a house on it, now I'm gonna be forced, because there is a branch, I'm gonna be forced to tie into it at that point. And I would be stupid not to, for the simple fact it's gonna cost me twice as much for a well it would be to tie into the city sewer and water.
You might get a shed on there for a house, but I don't know.
But, but, but that's my point, he's being charged for something he's probably never gonna ever use in his tenure there.
I don't, I don't think anybody would at that matter, it's such a small lot.
I think what might be best, if I may, mayor council, is now that we kinda know the, kinda some of the thoughts of what council members are thinking, is we do some more number crunching, I'll look at ordinances and put together some scenarios. If they have water and sewer, we would lose this, if we took everybody away, we'd lose this for revenue, and kinda put together some scenarios for next town.
Sounds good.
Then we know exactly what we're looking at, is that, sound good?
Sound good. But we're not talking about taking away the stormwater fees, right? Just water and sewer.
Just the half base charge where the people are not connected for water and sewer, is that correct?
Yeah, I, yeah, the storm, the stormwater is just, I mean, that's just one of the situations where it is mandated by the state, and we gotta manage all the water on all the parcels, and that's just how it is.
We're not even in control of that.
No, no.
That's not a thing that we necessarily wanna do, but we don't have a choice, so, I mean...
That's horrible, but true.
I mean, it is, just what it is.
Sounds good. Let's move on to E3, the Council Chambers Rental Discussion.
So you may recall, earlier in 2021, we had brought this policy back. It was a policy that was established in 2008, so quite a while ago. We had not done an overhaul of that policy, we updated to have a $100 damage deposit, put in some rules and regulations about use, added the capacity of this, this room in here, but we left the rest of that policy intact, which included that it was only to be rented out during city hall hours, so it wasn't a burden or cost to staff or the city. It also only had allowed certain groups and organizations, so religious, political groups were not permitted to rent this space. However, in going through the whole policies review that I've been doing, I did have the attorney look at that policy, and he said that you cannot do that, you cannot exclude groups because it's biased. And so my question for council, I mean, as long as I've been here, we have not rented out this facility, or this built, this room here. We've used it for staff trainings, we've used it for other staff meetings, developer meetings, we've used it for city functions, but not outside and beyond that. Some city events have been held in here when it was inclement weather, but I'm wondering if we really wanna open it up to the public and have a policy. If we do, that's fine, we'll need to tweak it and revise it so it opens it up for everybody and not excludes those certain groups, or we just leave it for city staff functions of the needs of the city?
So because I saw this coming up, I looked at quite a few cities around us, and there's nobody that lets anybody in their council chambers.
Yeah, a lot of them will do, do that for security reasons.
My question is, why would we rent out, why, why wouldn't we just push them over
My question is, why would we rent out, why, why wouldn't we just push them over to the.
We do.
Community center.
We don't, we don't need to rent out this as well, I don't think.
I mean, I, I hope and pray it never happens to any one of us, but, I mean, we could rent this room out, and then they put a bomb under where you're sitting, you know, we don't want something.
I think they'd take you out first.
They probably would, you're right, but, you know, I'm just saying, I, I don't want to even open that Pandora's box.
I would just.
I'd just say, no, let's not.
Just, we got a beautiful community center, it's available for you to rent.
City staff, however, training, meetings, absolutely.
Is that consensus on, or am I forgetting?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you for that direction.
We'll move on to E four, then, goal setting, meeting date discussion.
All right, so we have goal setting coming up next month, uh, we've done a couple of different things in the past, we've done, um, years back, not the last three years, but years prior to that, it was on a Tuesday morning, didn't work for schedules. We tried doing it after, um, some of our study meetings, um, but it ended up being really long, late night, uh, the other thing that we've done is we've done the fourth Tuesday in the, in the January, so that would put it at January twenty-fifth, uh, which, you know, is before?
The Tuesday.
That day, right, we have park board, so I don't know if we did it before or after park board, but, um, basically, my question is for you, Mayor and Council, is what date would you like to set, it doesn't have to be a specific, you know, certain day for goal settings, whatever you choose, so just looking for a direction on what you would like it to be, in the evening, um.
I do, I do want to add one correction, it's always Monday morning, I can do Tuesday morning, I know, I know Steve can't do it.
Oh, Monday morning, Monday morning, or you can do.
Yeah, I, I just hated those meetings, so.
I can't, I can't do mornings, I can't do it during the day, I just can't.
Yeah, so I'd rather, I'd, I would vote for an evening, so, but didn't we, didn't we do it at the end of a, uh, just at the end of the.
We did, but it became a really long day for all of us.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
To do it separately is not.
Can we, can we do like the twenty-fourth?
A Monday day?
Some Monday.
Or, or the twenty-sixth, oh, you know.
Wednesday night?
Yeah. Let's, there's some, there's no meetings going on Wednesday nights here, is there?
Not Monday or Wednesday.
Or like, like you mentioned, the, the, the day before, the part, was it Park and Rec that night?
Yeah.
On Tuesday, Park and Rec is Tuesday.
I'm okay with either or, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me, but do that, before Park, Park and Rec is six thirty.
Six P M.
Six o'clock.
To, I can see, I'm not sure what would be on her agenda, um, but it's the first meeting of the month, I don't know if there'd be a whole lot for January, we could set it for seven P M, so it'd be after park board if we wanted, um, and then just ask that, they kind of move it along.
I'd rather, if we're going to do, if we're going to do a goal setting, we need a little time, I mean, I don't like five o'clock meetings, but.
Six, maybe?
I, the earlier is the better, because I don't, I turn into a pumpkin at eight.
So we could do maybe five thirty on a Monday?
That's fine with me.
I would vote, I prefer Monday, do you, you prefer Wednesday, I mean, I can do Wednesday, but I prefer Monday.
Either or, Mondays are long as it is, that's why I thought maybe Wednesday, but I'll, I'll do either one, whichever works the best for everybody.
Pretty flexible.
I don't care what you guys.
One voting Monday.
Any meeting, miney mo.
Monday at five thirty on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth? Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Sounds good, I'll send it out to all, all department heads, thank you.
Thank you.
Farmers market discussion, location discussion, oh, I skipped a word, hey, man, how you doing?
Mayor and council, so with the old liquor store being sold, it brings up the question, where does the farmers market go? So we have the new liquor store as op, as an option, Bluebird Park as an option, and back to Eagle Park where it returned as an option as well, um, the market averaged fifteen vendors each week with a max of twenty-one, at the new liquor store, um, you can utilize the north end of the parking lot, but that's up for sale, so if that sells, it kind of takes that end out of it, but there is room for more vendors on the north end of the parking lot. The south end of the parking lot, she's limited to about fifteen vendors to squeeze them in there, but it kind of takes up space, so safety's own for the people going to the market, RV parking, all that kind of stuff, so, um, liquor store staff has asked that if it goes to the new farmer, or farmer's, goes to the new liquor store, that the date be changed to a, a different day of the week, just to not interfere with them. So that's kind of the, the liquor store, the Bluebird Park, we can move it to Bluebird Park, we have plenty of options, she's, she can have, um, uh, visibility would be limited because of traffic flow over in that direction, uh, she could do some other things, including live music, food trucks, and some kids programmed here in the market as well, um, but it would likely depend heavily on marketing on her end. Uh, Eagle Park is another option, it's, uh, would be some marketing there as well, uh, the vendors had some concerns over going back to Eagle Park, with the Eagle Park being revised, there was a little less tension there, uh, with that space. Um, with these obstacles, well, being said, I guess, Wednesday seems to be a really good day for the market in the, in the local area, it's not under the market on Wednesday, so it would be a good fit, um.
Did you say we had an issue with Eagle Park, the vendors?
Some of the vendors did have some concerns going back to Eagle Park, um, but I, with it being revised, I think there's less issues of it going back to Eagle Park, because there's a lot more green space in the park now, um, there's a little limited invisibility at Eagle Park, kind of off the main drag a little bit. Um, Alyssa is, her recommendation is to go to the new liquor store and have it on a Wednesday, um, I think that'd just be the best with having all the traffic closed there, and it might boost them, Wednesday night might be a good night for the market for people going to liquor store, might, you know, going to farmers market, might go to liquor store as well, so that's her recommendation.
What about Coburn's, highway, highway frontage, lot exposure?
Yeah, she, she didn't reach out to Coburn's as an option, we can always go back to Coburn's and ask them again if you want to reach in.
Is there, like their south, would be their southwest corner of their parking lot, it's always empty, either.
Why wouldn't we just keep it at our liquor store?
The vendors may get more traffic if it's visible from sixty-five.
Our liquor store might get more business.
They're going to have to pull right in by the liquor store to come into the farmers market at Coburn's parking lot. I'm just, I'm just thinking better visibility for our vendors and possibly you could grow, grow it there too.
With Coburn's as an option?
Yep. For, and it, you'd never, would never have to move it again for the third time.
I think the consensus was with the vendors that they assumed it was going back to the, going, following the liquor store, you know, but we can, you know, reach out to Coburn's and see if they're, how they feel about it, I'm not sure if she did that or not, she doesn't have her memo, so I, I don't, she probably did, but.
I mean, just how, how big of an area at the new liquor store would you have to expand on?
It would be in the grass area on south end of the parking lot, so where the RV parking.
Are you going to be able to add, say, ten more vendors in the future, do you have enough room, parking, all that?
Not, not on the south side, she would build a max out on the north parking lot, and until, if we have any, if there's interest in north end of the parking lot, there's a lot more room on the north end of the park, in that same grassy area.
So there is a large grassy space, but that is the one that we subdivided, uh, to be able to sell.
That's what, why move it a third time?
We would move it to the south end, and you are, you would be capped at vendors on the south side.
So I guess I would argue the Coburn's thing, because.
You just got room for growth there, great visibility.
What have we done for them?
What do you mean, what have we done for them?
Well, they wanted three, two, we told them no.
That was, that's one thing.
They wanted this, that, and the other, we've told them no, every corner we've turned, so now we're going to go ask them for a favor.
I don't know, they let the Boy Scouts. Put the tree lot there, and it's going to expose them too.
I think they're going to push back and tell us no.
I don't see them being that way. They've been, they've been, they've done a lot in this community, with BMX, the Boy Scouts, um, this is a farmers market.
I, I.
Yeah, but they're selling, if it was me, I, I would be like, well, I sell the same thing, why would I want you to sell that in my parking lot?
There's that point too.
And I agree with him on that.
I would never let a pizza shop, setup shop in my parking lot, you know, or any food truck for that, you know.
Jimmy, can I come sell pizza at your parking lot?
You know, they do it in Cambridge at a grocery store.
Do they?
Parking lot, yeah.
We do know that there are, I'm sorry, we do know that there are a few other Coburn's, um, that do have farmers market in their parking lots.
There's, I believe, Clearwater.
Yeah, I would, I don't think it'd be a.
Is it Clearwater?
At Seago, and then, there's another one too that we had heard of.
Yeah, we could ask, but I'm just saying, be prepared for them to say no.
Yeah, I get, I guess I would have assumed they would say no in a heartbeat, but.
I would too, if it was them.
I can, all I'll say is, we can ask them, but I, I would, wouldn't hold your breath if they're going to say yes, that's all I'm going to say.
If they don't say yes, then.
Then what's our option?
I would say, why not use that lot, if that's where it would be better, I mean, why not use it until it sells, or maybe it might help sell the lot if somebody sees it and says, hey, you know, there's a lot right here that you should go into or something, you know, I mean, it might draw traffic to the lot and the liquor store.
And I see, I see what Dan's saying, that we're going to end up moving it again, just across the parking lot. Right, so, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm with Jimmy, I'd use it to sell that lot, and then once it's sold, then you move it to, I, I'd publicize and promote and.
Right, the only bad part is, there's less room on the south side, so there's no room for expansion, if I got five vendors that are interested in joining the group, you're going to have to turn them away.
If a lady, if a lady that comes from a big city and had some huge events happen in small places can recommend putting it in the liquor store parking lot, then I say, why, why doubt her, I'd say we follow with her.
See, I, I like the idea of.
I look into the future a little further, I guess, then.
See, I like the idea of Bluebird Park. Then she can have something set up, they, you know, you might be able to get somebody that comes in and plays music for nothing, or, or they have, you know, they have a food truck, or.
Or we go with what Jimmy says and sell them the lot, and then if it does sell, then we go to Bluebird Park.
I mean, that's, the, the lot's going to sell, and it's not, it's, I don't think it's going to affect the farmers market to that point of that year, unless that lot sold the next day. You know, I mean, it's.
To, to date, we have not had any inquiries on it.
I don't think we're getting much visibility for the farmers market in Bluebird Park, so.
I'll tell you what, State, uh, Sago has theirs in their park.
Okay.
And they fill that thing full.
Is their park off the highway eight?
No, it's right off, off the highway eight.
Yeah.
But, you got to realize, they actually have a waiting list to get into that thing, I mean, there's like sixty vendors in that thing.
Uh, I mean, we could put big signs and a neon sign at that matter that says farmers market, but.
People are going to go to wherever farmers market is, if they want to go to it, they're going to go to it no matter where it is.
I'd go no matter where you put it in the city, I'm going to it, because I love that farmers market, so.
I just think having a better liquor store would be good, a benefit.
I'm with you. I, I'm with you. I, I think we should keep it at that liquor store, and if that lot just happens to sell, then we think about Bluebird Park, I'd steer clear of Coburn's myself, but that's my opinion.
We can still ask them, but.
We could ask them, Dan could be right, for all I know, I mean, I'm more than willing to ask and see what happens.
Why, both Josie and Mike said that, that other Coburn's are having them, so I, I don't, I picture, I don't picture them saying no. I mean, even if we put it at the liquor store, I think it benefits Coburn's, because people go.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
They'll, they'll go, they'll go to the farmer's garden, they'll go to the liquor store, then they'll go to Coburn's.
Yeah, matter of fact, I'd do that.
Yeah, so.
Except for I don't drink, so I'd be going to the liquor store for my wife, and farmers market for me, and Coburn's for the family, but I'd kill three birds with one stone, absolutely, there you go. So I, I guess, ask Coburn's, see what they say?
Most of their, like, Coburn's are meat and produce, it's all from local farmers.
And, and I, I guess we could see what Coburn's says, and if Coburn shuts us down like you and I think, Jimmy, then I, I think we go to the liquor store.
If they're doing it in other towns, they might not shut down.
They might not, who knows, we could be wrong, so ask away, I guess.
Okay, we'll, we'll reach out to Coburn's and see what they say, bring it back to the next meeting in January.
Amen.
I think we'll just report in the admin update, because I think to move it along, Alyssa does need to start reaching out to vendors in, right away after the first year, so if you're okay with it, Mayor Council, we'll reach out to Coburn's, if they are not interested, or it takes too long to get a, an answer, we'll plan to have it on the north side of the liquor lot, if that does sell, we're going to move it to the south, and we'll just report as we go in the admin updates.
Keep an eye on those admin updates, fellas, absolutely.
I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with it.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to E six, the Economic Development Authority Planning Commission and Parks Recreation and Cultural Board Minutes Discussion.
You want a bottle of oxygen?
So the current practice is.
What'd he say?
The current practice is and has been, as long as I've been here and before that, is that the meetings from those other boards, whether it be E D A, park board, or, um, planning commission, have all come back through, um, councils have been approved, so typically the mayor reads them all, and then they get approved all together. Actually, it doesn't need to be done, uh, the board should be approving their own, and council, they, does not need to approve the board, the minutes that they've approved, so that we don't have to send draft or final copies, if people want to see what that board approved, you would go, you can go to our website, but you would see on their agendas, the minutes that they're approving from the previous meeting.
Oh, so we don't have to approve their minutes?
Correct, we don't have to approve their minutes, so what I'm curious is if you want us to continue with the practice that we've been doing and approve them and put them in our city council, um, agenda packets, or should we not do that because it's not required?
I mean, we're all present, except for Park and Rec, I'm, I'm the only one present for that, so, I mean, if there's anything to worry about, believe me, I'd be telling you guys.
I don't mind.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I don't mind getting the minutes, but I don't see the need to approve them.
Yeah, I would like to get some minutes too, but.
I'd still like the minutes, but I don't think we need to, we're there in the whole, except for Park and Rec.
But it's sometimes if you got to look back.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You know, it's just easier.
Would you like to see the draft, or just the final, or both?
Just the final.
I can put the final in our weekly, my weekly updates, just attach it to that, when, whenever they come, go through that board, so for example, park board would approve their final minutes the following month to, that last Tuesday of the month, that Friday, I can attach them to that email. Or I can send them out as.
I think that'd be perfect, I think the final would be perfect, it's still informing all of us, keeping us in the loop, and, and you're putting it in, you know, attaching it to your admin updates, that just gives you guys more incentive to read those admin updates.
I mean, I don't, I don't, to me, I don't really see the need to see the ones, I mean, we're, for one thing, we're at the.
We are there.
The park board, I mean, if something comes out of there, we're going to know about it.
I'd be waving the flag, gentlemen, here's what happened on the park.
Well, we're going to, we're going to vote on it, so we're going to see the details on anything, any action that comes out of there, it's still going to.
The final say has to come.
So, I don't know, we need to.
They are just a recommendation board.
Yeah.
Yep, we still have to vote on it, so.
I mean, I, I see the informal part of it, I do, but I don't.
I don't see where any, we need to.
You guys never get emails or questions about what happened in the park board meeting, and you're not even on the park board?
I don't know.
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Well, I have, but I'm on the park board, so I don't know.
So I look at the minutes.
When you were, I've gotten them.
It's because you're tied with me, Max.
Come up with an answer.
I mean, when.
So I have to look at the minutes, come up with an answer for them, because I'm not on that board.
Maybe we should send them out though.
So.
I don't think sending them out's a bad idea, but I don't think, I don't think we need to approve them, but.
The other thing we could do, so if you would like, um, when they email out the, the packet, the agenda for the park board meeting, that month's meetings before are in there, do you just want to be added to that email that's already going out?
That's not giving us any information, though.
No, the minutes that they're approving that night are in the packet, the park board packet, so if you just get added to that email list, which is a saved list, doesn't cost any more time for us to add your names as council to the list of getting the agenda, if you just want to scroll to the minute section, that email's already going out. Do you want to do that?
That seems good.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Sounds good to me.
I don't think we need to approve them, though.
No, I don't think we need to approve them.
Okay, so effective at the next city council meeting, you won't see those on there?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, actually, having said that, I'll just need to double check, because our process is written in city code, chapter eight, I'll need to make sure I don't have to do an ordinance amendment to take that out, if that happens, you might see them for, and vote another month.
That'll make the meetings.
So when they disappear, don't be shocked.
Thirty-second quicker meetings, then.
Probably not.
I do have a couple additional things to add.
Adam, Adam, wait.
So at your place, I do have this, uh, concept layout from Jason, uh, this is the same thing that he had discussed previously about, uh, potential intersection, um, change at Eighth and County Road Five. This, that intersection that goes to the intermediate school, so he had had a visual or just a beacon up, um, the evening that he spoke on this, and so here's a concept drawing, um, he had estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars for this, for the lane changes, adding that median in on both sides. Um, it costs about a hundred and three, so he was pretty spot on right off the top of his head, but I'm seeking if you like this, as what he had shared about a month ago, and then what this concept drawing is, we'll share this with the county, because it did seem like they would be open to a discussion to do something at that intersection.
I like it.
Is that using the existent asphalt layout?
Yes.
So there is no asphalt really worked to be done?
I don't, I don't believe so, but there is concrete work, because those would be permanent medians that would be installed.
Let's also keep in mind, though, that the city engineer's retired.
County.
County. What? He did, he, he did retire.
I'm not sure.
He retired, he resigned.
He resigned, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm sure that they will have someone in there assume.
You'd think so.
They do have an engineering firm that they work with.
No, 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 he retired, the assistant resigned.
Oh, did he? Okay, I don't know.
So there's absolutely nobody in there. January something, nope, I, nope.
It don't matter, we'll get it figured out.
We'll get it figured out.
Send it to the county and just see what they're interested in, if they would do some cost sharing with this, they did seem open to that idea, so I'll move forward with that.
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we had a fifty percent agreement, didn't we have a fifty percent agreement?
Well, that's what we were going to talk about.
Let's put a roundabout there.
We're, we're going to come up with this idea.
With like flashing everywhere.
We'd come up with this idea, tell them it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars, do they want to split that cost, or do they want to do the third, three quarters, like we did, or we're talking about with a quick trip light.
It depends on how many legs of the street that they have, so they would have two, and we would have two.
Could we do both at the same time and save money? Yeah?
I just had one more, uh, I just, one quick thing, um, Sam Clockstein from, uh, I Sannie Historical Society reached out to me, asking about, um, possibly doing a. Sam Klockstein from Iscany Historical Society reached out to me, asking about possibly doing a, a history-type memorial sign, kind of like what we have placed in downtown. There's one next to the old post office and-
One right out here, even?
Yep. For the marshal that was shot and killed back in nineteen twenty-six?
I didn't know him.
Yeah, I don't, I was a baby then.
Thank goodness, that's before everybody's time.
But just to honor him, and, because he was a, you know, I worked for, I don't know if it was, we were a city then, but. And he was going to see if the city, the historical society, and the county would go in on the cost of doing that, and actually place it at the site, close to the site.
Where was the site?
Right by the railroad tracks.
On Main Street?
Main Street and the railroad tracks there? Yep, it would have been, let's see, maybe, ah, you could go this way and be on the other side of the tracks, on the right side.
By the B F W sign.
Yep, I, I had told him, I have no idea who owns that lot, up to the right away of the railroad, but I said, you know, that's-
Do we know who owns that lot?
It might be the railroad, if you're on that side, if you're on the south side of Main Street, Pride's Railroad. However, I know that Alyssa's working with the park board about putting an observation deck for railroad, but it might be nice to make that be a memorial observation deck. It would tie in-
That'd be a perfect place to put a plaque or something.
They want to put in a railroad observation, but that would be perfect to tie in, absolutely.
The municipal rose garden plaque that you see out here, I did work with a company to design it, it was not very costly at all, because I did the design in-house, and then they just printed it for me, and it's pretty great, great quality, so, I mean, we could definitely reach out for cost sharing, but it's not too incredibly expensive for that.
You and, Steve and I looked at that one day.
Sam did want to be here tonight for Cal, but he wasn't able to, so he would like to come in the future and talk more about it. He has more details.
I think what would be really great is to have him reach out to Alyssa, and let him know what he's kind of thinking, and I know that we, well, not we, but Chief Myers just posts on Facebook every year about that memorial, and just attribute to him on that day.
Yep.
So we do have some information about that too, and we could work together and collaborate on that, but have him, Alyssa would be the point person for that.
Okay, I'll let him know that, then.
And the last thing that I was going to share is just a couple updates I wanted to let you know on Friday. Last Friday, we did close on nine oh one East Duel Hobby Farms property, and then today, we did close on four hundred East Duel, which is the old liquor store, to Nick and Drew's Discount Foods, and they are extremely excited.
I got to tell you, I went into the linnstrom on my way to Sam's Christmas village on purpose.
Yeah.
They got some pretty good deals in that place. We didn't walk out of there empty-handed, I'll just say that, and of course, I had the wife with me, I knew that was going to happen, but.
What's the name of the Nelsons?
Nick and Drew's.
It's Nick and Drew's Discount Foods.
Okay.
And that, that's all I have.
Steve, I told you to be on your phone. Anything else, Ms. Wood?
That is all.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley, and second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.
Everybody did Jimmy's pizza. Yeah, date time.
I had-
I had Jimmy's pizza, pizzas.